Present standards are pretty well in alignment with this report. And these standards, there's nothing radical that is going to change in here. Would you say?
So the only one where we have beefed it up and it's sort of the latest progression is on stormwater treatment.
Oh yeah, okay.
So there's definitely much more definitive guidance now on what's required and where. And that's really been evolving over the last five years. And so this reflects sort of a rural standard approach, not taking, say, a city of Vancouver approach to stormwater treatment. Something that's being used in other rural jurisdictions as well. So not just leaving it up to the developer to figure that all out on their own. There's much more specific guidance on that. So that's probably the only piece where some meat has been added to the document. But the rest is for the most part the way it was before that.
Certainly not a bad thing. So it's more of just a formalization of what we've been doing. And what was the other thing? I guess that was about it. Yeah, free job. And as far as variations, like there is a, there is a, if there's something that doesn't quite fit in an area, there is a way to get around that. There's a variance procedure that you can go through. Is that the only thing or is there a little bit of flexibility in these? I mean, how's it written? How's the overview?
Yeah, there's also some language in the bylaw around like modifications to existing systems that provides latitude for.
Oh, good. Okay, well, that's exactly right. Yeah, I'm looking forward. That's great. Super. Thank you.
Okay. Excellent. If you want to speak to this, I've got John Youngson.
Yes, I do.
Sorry, go ahead.
I appreciate this is great. Thank you very much. I'm wondering, since this is based on the 2007 work and kind of the way things are done on Bowen, I just wanted to ask if you've taken into account the 2010 official community plan update or the work of the Economic Development Committee, who's recently done a bunch of work that highlights the importance of trails and nature to the island's economy. And then, as you know, coming up, we've got the Integrated Transportation Master Plan, Parks Plan that we'll hear about later on this afternoon. These are all kind of updates of the world since 2007 on Bowen Island. And I'm wondering if you've taken any of that into account, especially the OCP.
Right. I mean, certainly any bylaw that gets approved by council needs to be consistent with the OCP.
So this is something that you've been looking at? The Official Community Plan?
Well, I think certainly if there were any inconsistencies that we had seen going through it. But the Official Community Plan is broader policy on land use. This is really more the specific regulations. I think that it's very consistent with the OCP in that it allows us to be more rigorous about the environmental policy that is in the OCP. Because it does deal with drainage and sediment control and outfalls and those sorts of environmental standards that we would like to see more in stride in our law.
Okay, okay.
So from that perspective. And one other note is that this is happening to Island Trust. And anything, any regulatory bylaw that impacts on things that could potentially be in the Island Trust policy statement should be referred to them as well. So part of this process will also be.
Good. Because I didn't see that in here. And one of my questions was, will this be referred to the Island Trust? Because so much of that is about preserving, protecting, including not just nature and our beautiful scenery, but also things like water quality. So here's another question. Potable water supply that you have to prove, is that during any particular season? Or can it be any kind of year? We have 32% of Bowen citizens in our most recent survey that were concerned about water shortages. And I think it more seems we've done a bunch of recent surveys that you don't have. And I'm wondering, when do they test potable water? Can that be in the middle of the wet winter? Or does it have to be in the dry summer?
So if it is a single lot and it's a single well supplied, then technically it's under Vancouver Coastal Health Authority. So and it would be a good question to ask them. Typically, the municipality would not necessarily get involved in that. The only thing that's noted here is that if they come back and determine that treatment is required, that a covenant be put on title so that when the next property or advisor, they don't think this well is suitable to drink, potentially without treatment. Because sometimes that can be missed. Anyone connected to a community water system is operated, I believe, all of them are operated by Bowen Island municipalities. The testing and development of master plans and all that stuff is done in a comprehensive fashion. So for the individuals, yes, it'd be coastal health that would be setting the standards for what testing they require.
But I thought I saw you in this slide presentation had something about potable water supply in your wells.
Correct.
New wells, sorry.
We've asked for the testing to be included and provided. But from a jurisdiction perspective, it is health that has jurisdiction.
Right.
Well, as a matter of course, in approval of subdivisions on private wells, we require a certified professional to, under sealed professional, to guarantee the supply and affordability of water for subdivision improvement.
That's a 1.7 in here.
All right. I was just responding to the slides there. And I think my, that's okay. I know we're over time. I'm going to stop asking questions, except that I would like to, I'm happy to move the recommendation with the addition of the Island Trust be referred to.
Okay. Oh, okay. We'll get to that in just a minute. Just take your more reading person than what I was going to use.
Just two quick questions. This bylaw will apply to all subdivisions? So even someone with a five acre lot who decides they wish to subdivide, this will be applicable?
If they're creating new lots, there is some exception. If it's a lot line adjustment, where it's just a change in the property line and there are no new lots being created, then there's some latitude there. But if new lots are being created.
I'm just thinking about the, this is a very technical document for, we'll get that head around. And there may need to be some public information material that's developed that accompanies once it gets put in place. So I'd like to see it come to a later date, obviously, to the communications team. And then just a second question is just, I'm sure Alison has some notes regarding little typos and so forth. I've got a few. Who should we send those to? Do you have that? Okay, thank you.
Don, you had some questions?
Just a couple, actually. This is encouraging. On the land, the municipality or surplus lands, if any of that land is to be made available for long-term lease, who's responsible for complying to this? The municipality or the tenant in the long-term lease? It's just one. No, I don't either. But it's one of those things because in determining participation in a long-term lease, it's an added cost to get that.
Right. It would have to be negotiated at the time. Who paid for it? How triple net the whole deal was.
And who applies for the permits?
Yeah, who applies for it. But I don't think it would affect the actual standards that have to be maintained. We have to do it.
There's more cost than this.
Yeah.
The second one was the rainwater, storm systems. In situations where you've got subdivisions where there's cul-de-sacs that are not municipal roads, they're basically easements between properties.
The cul-de-sacs?
Yes.
Well, if we're doing a subdivision now, the cul-de-sacs would be our roads.
Well, for example, okay, well, there are some.
They would be dedicated road because the public, you need a cul-de-sac. It's a requirement.
Hence whether it's a strata or not.
No, well, there are some existing cul-de-sacs on the, on the island. And if you've got, it's funny to put a rainstorm system, a hundred-year type thing, which requires some pretty significant engineering. What happens when you get into, start subdividing, building on these lots, which are predominantly rock, is that your surface runoff becomes an issue. And if you've got surface runoff that's through people's individual slots and the shared easements, who has jurisdiction over that? It's being plugged up, the degree is coming down. Is that something that this would cover? Or would it extend into easements?
My assumption is that that's not what the purpose of this bylaw is. But I would say that many, many a good neighborhood fight has to be over. I mean, does this bylaw, is something that we can use to work in those situations? Or does it have anything to do with that?
Yeah. So there's, if you look at page 51, overland flow ratings. So unless the storm service system is oversized to accommodate the hundred-year event, provision for surface flow is required. Overland flow rating is generally accommodated along roadways, whales and watercourses. These must be, these shall be protected by restricted governance rates of wave identified in the stormwater management plan. Again, going forward, obviously. So that, exactly what you're saying there, there's not sort of people blocking overland flow paths that they don't realize are overland flow paths.
That just leads into my last question, which is have climate change impacts and changes that we're feeling now on the island and that there's projections out there available for, have they been taken into account in this bylaw? Because when I see things like 1 and 100, your events, that implies before, like based on the past, yet climate change standards are changing. And we're seeing more frequent intense rainfall, that kind of thing. So I'm just wondering, has climate change been considered?
Yes. If you go to page 46.
Oh, good.
Under rainfall intensity. So climate change produces influence rainfall pattern distribution. Design engineers are to address the potential effects of climate change by one of the following approaches. And so if it's a very simple system, multiply a 15% safety factor is to be applied. And if it's something that's more complex and comprehensive, they actually have to do analysis to determine. So as a minimum, 15% oversizing. Otherwise, more detailed analysis is required. So yes, that's covered off.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. That was going to hear us for you some other.
Do you want to make the recommendation?
We got the recommendation.
If I could have the motion to accept the report and to refer it to staff as per the written agenda?
We wanted to add regard for the Island Trust.
Yeah. Yeah. So where it says to the Parks, Trails and Greenways Advisory Committee, the Transportation Advisory Committee and the Municipal Services Review Committee and the Island Trust, if you could insert the words "and" the Island Trust.
Take up first hand.
And to, anyway, otherwise it says written there that the Committee of the Whole, the whole group of information, provide comments, which we just did on this draft subdivision and development servicing by law number 447, 2017. And that the Committee of the Whole recommend council, direct staff to refer this same bylaw to these committees that I just mentioned and the Island Trust and to arrange a public information meeting to provide information and receive comment on the draft bylaw before we re- reporting back to council. I move this.
Do I have a second? Okay, I'm in favor. That's passing members. Thank you very much.
Okay, next up.
Good afternoon. We are here today to present the draft Parks Plan. And I just wanted to introduce who's sitting here at the table. In case anybody doesn't know, Michelle Campbell works for Lees and Associates. And Eric Lees is up.
I work for Michelle.
You work for Michelle. So Eric and Michelle are here today. And in the gallery here, we have a lot of people that have contributed invaluable information and feedback and input throughout the process. We have working group members behind us here who have been invaluable throughout the process. And we have some people that have evolved in some of the stakeholder sessions along the way. It's been quite a journey to get to this point. So I just wanted to go, so we're just seeking some feedback today. And I just want to go a little bit into the background before introducing Eric to present the PowerPoint presentation today. And so updating the existing 1994 Bowen Island Parks Plan, that identified as the council priority since 2015. In February of 2015, a diverse group of knowledge holders and stakeholders took part in a park plan scoping or visioning workshop. The information gathered during that particular engagement session established the foundation upon which the park plan has been created. Following the foundational visioning workshop, Parks Plan Working Group was established. And that consisted of Daniel Martin, our planner, and Christine Miller, avid horsewoman and member of Bayhora, Bayhora, and Claudia Schaefer, archivio, and DJ Blair, archivio, or no, archivio, master of science, very intimately knowledgeable about shorelines. And Sue Ellen Fast, Councilor Fast, and myself. And we all looked at many different consultants. And we did this sort of blind face test, this process, in which, you know, just unbiasedly, we were in agreement that Lees and Associates fit our need the best to take us forward and work collaboratively to produce this draft plan. And although the plan focuses on Bowen Island municipality parkland, it was evident from the community input that trails, beaches, ecological and cultural recommendations also were wanted or needed to be represented in the plan. And I just wanted to let County of the Whole know today that on October 17th last week, last Tuesday, the Parks, Trails, Greenways Advisory Committee recommended that council adopt the 2017 Parks Planning Principle. So just a few milestones, really quick, high, high level overview of some key moments in time prior to having Eric speak is that, as I already said, the stakeholders and the Parks and Trails, Greenways Advisory Committee and members of council took part in a visionary workshop in February 2015. The Park Plan Working Group was established in November 2015. Lees and Associates consultants were retained in February of 2016. There was information gathering from February through to March of 2016. There was research and analysis of visionary workshop outcomes and existing municipal GIS data from March 2016 to April 2016, so about two months, month period. Now that was a huge deal, is just compiling what we had in our database. It was kind of fractured and just getting a really good sense of what we have as a municipality in order to move forward in any sort of planning or acquisition strategy. We just had to know where we were starting from. And we also embarked in First Nations consultation. That's been ongoing throughout the process. And created, a creation of an updated and consolidated Parks, Trails, Beach Access map. Just spoke of that. Some other key moments or key processes or key milestones throughout the process have been community engagement and consolidation of feedback. And that has been ongoing. Michelle Mullner of the David Suzuki Foundation was retained to write the National Capital section. And that was funded by the David Suzuki Foundation and Citcon Foundation. And today, here we are, presentation to the County of the Whole. So I just want to talk a little bit about the financial aspect of the plan thus far as well. Is that the plan has been developed within the allocated budget of $65,000. The estimated budgetary allowance for implementation of all items in the park plan is approximately $160,000 per year over the next 10 years. Now that is without acquisition of grants, you know, working with other departments. And that would be in a world where we would parcel out this much this year and do work equally over the next 10 years. There's creative ways to make this plan come to life. And there's ways of accessing funds to do so, I believe, over the next 10 years. This is a guide to help us, help the community, help the municipality embark into this the future of our Parks, Trails, Beaches, Beach Accesses. And just want to give the County of the Whole just an update on the Community Parks Reserve Fund that we have right now currently to date. We have approximately $480,000 in the Community Parks Reserve Fund. This fund is restricted to capital works or equipment to maintain municipal parkland or municipal property, sorry rather. And presently, there's approximately $73,000 in the Parkland Reserve Fund, which is restricted to the purpose of acquiring parkland. So just wanted to update the County of the Whole on those two pots of money. As I mentioned, it's possible that some implementation expenditures could come from these sources, but raising additional funds through grants and general revenue tax increase could also be considered. So now I'll just pass the presentation over, the session over to Eric to go through the presentation.
Can I just ask, I see people peeking in at the back door. I think they're not sure whether they can come in. Can we have that open? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Indeed. Come on in. This is on an auspicious occasion. Mr. Mayor, Members of Council and those attending today, it's our honor, Michelle and Bonnie and me, to present this draft. This has been a long process, one that we knew would be long from the outset, but I must say quite gratifying, I think, for all of us that have been involved so far. And we certainly hope that everyone else in the room feels the same way. I will, I won't gloss over the project process, but Bonnie's done a really good job of hitting the key milestones. I will, however, talk about some of the key findings and want to be sure that council and community feels reassured that they were heard, number one, and that our recommendations are founded on really good, solid data. The vision statement is, I teased Bonnie, it's more like a novel than a statement. So I'll leave it to folks in the room to read it when it comes up. But that enjoyed 90% approval when we went to the community. But I'll spend most of the time talking about the key recommendations and close with the implementation plan and Bonnie's draft recommendation. This is the, what is it, nine or 10 step process, which we knew from the outset would extend over this amount of time, which is, from a consulting standpoint, is reassuring. Because oftentimes, processes like this do take this long, but everyone expected them to take much shorter. Well, in this case, we expected them to take this long. And in fact, we're pretty much on target. So I think everyone should be proud of that. The diagram shows all the different types of engagements along the way, including and fundamentally, starting with the visioning workshop, which members of the community engaged in on your own, without any help from people like Michelle and me. And it was a wonderful basis for us to really underpin the whole, not only the process, but the end product. So with that, we launched into some information gathering. And I won't bore you with these numbers, but the fact of the matter is that there are actually 2,200 some odd hectares of parks protected areas and crown land on the island. We know that not all of those are protected for park purposes, of course. 73 hectares are within the municipal parkland and a significant amount within Crippin and the Ecological Reserve of 450. So those are well and truly protected, of course, but provincial park, the crown land, which makes up better than half of the total available space on the island, is largely unprotected. The trail's ongoing. There's 94 kilometers of trails by our current count. We may be off by a few. But 47 of those kilometers are municipally owned. So that's really good. And there is 50 coastal access points and beaches, which is fundamental for an island community. We've gone through an extensive inventory, parkland inventory process. And Bonnie's right. It was a lot of work for Michelle and others within your organization to assemble this and get it to a good, solid, sound footing. And that's just really good housekeeping from a space management and inventory standpoint. So you're coming away from this process with some really good sound data, its property map. One of the things that we always like to do and members of council typically want to know is, well, how do we compare with others of a similar nature? And it's always difficult to do a perfect apples-to-apples comparison, but hectares per thousand is a pretty reasonable way of looking at communities. And at the present time, you have approximately almost 20 hectares per thousand of parkland, whereas the average hectares per thousand for BC communities of a similar size, rural size, is 12.9. And we actually expect that even with growth, that your hectares per thousand will remain above the BC average. So the 16.7 is a direct reflection of population growth, assuming no new parkland is included or added to the inventory. And of course, Crippin is and Alaraka are key parks as well. There's no real standards around those type of parks in BC. One of the other ways of measuring adequacy is to look at the spatial analysis, the spatial arrangement, distribution of parks. And it should come as no surprise to most of you here that on the whole, Bowen residents are quite well served by parks within a 400 meter, if not an 800 meter range. So you won't be able to read all this from the back of the room, but the darker brown is a 400 meter walking distance to parks. The lighter brown is the 800 meter walking distance. And the mauve blue colors are walking distances to Crippin. And the dark green are walking distances to the crown land. So there are very few corners of the island community that are not well served by public parkland. So what did we hear? The public engagement process was about as extensive as Michelle and I have experienced. We think it was thorough and rigorous. It included not only open houses, pop-up booths, group discussions and interviews, random stratified telephone survey, which is really important, parallel online and hard copy questionnaires and presence on Facebooks as well as open houses. So it was a really good, solid process. This is just one image of something that we got a lot of joy of with the sort of the skeleton of the tree. And then people, mostly kids, were able to put on these leads, what was important to them. So it was kind of a fun whimsical way of engaging young people. It was your idea, Bonnie, was it not?
I think it was her. Katie and I worked on it together. Katie was.
I want to give you the great.
But dinosaurs were, searching for dinosaurs was really popular.
Right. I'm not sure we've put that into the recommendations yet. So by the numbers then, really important to understand, and again, really no surprise, but really good to confirm during processes like this, what are the main outdoor activities that people feel are important here? And hiking and walking and swimming, going to the beach rated the top three based on the phone survey. So these are unaided. In other words, these are not solicited responses. Whereas during the online survey, where for the purposes of the medium, we had to list them, so they were aided. But look at the responses, largely the same. Hiking, walking, going to the beach and swimming. Hiking, walking, going to the beach, and swimming, were again, the top three. So we had some really nice congruence there. And I think you should feel pretty good about the satisfaction level with municipal parks, trails, and beaches, where fully 71% of people felt very satisfied or somewhat satisfied with the system. And then drilling a bit deeper, the best way to look at this is, you know, the green is good, so most people felt safe, parks were sufficient in size, sufficiently maintained, and a sufficient number, kind of a saw, 50/50 there, but getting into the lesser green, more blue in these grass, more people felt that the parks need to be better identified and more physically accessible. So you'll see in our recommendations how we've responded to those. We also asked about priorities. People felt that the marine habitat, ecosystem protection is a top priority, followed closely by trails, terrestrial habitat, ecosystem protection. And as well, various suggestions were made for Bowen's parks, trails, and beaches, with the most common being improving maintenance of beaches and trails, improving, providing more washroom facilities, and expanding or linking hiking trails. So I'll take a breather here while you read the vision statement.
What's that, A to Z?
This is as comprehensive a vision statement as I've seen, but I think it's wonderful and reflects Bowen really, really well. And when we presented this to the public in the online survey, over 90% of people felt that it was good. So I think that that's really great going forward for council and the community to understand this is the vision of the system.
Eric, just for those who maybe can't read, could we just read it out?
You? How would you read?
I'll read this, yeah, thank you. Bowen Islands, parks, trails, and beaches provide diverse environments where people connect with each other and with nature. Outdoor spaces enhance our community's health and well-being by drawing people outdoors to walk, to hike, ride, play, and explore. Multi-generational, inclusive, and accessible outdoor spaces contribute to the community's strong sense of place and belonging. Bowen Islands interconnected, parks, trails, and beaches protect marine and terrestrial ecosystems, conserve biodiversity, inspire stewardship, support outdoor education, and contribute to the island's peaceful, natural character. So that's the vision statement.
Well said, thanks, Bill. Thanks, Bonnie. So the way the real core chapters of the master plan are organized are under these seven primary headings. And so what I'm going to do, Mr. Mayor, members of council, is to go through these, and I'll concentrate on some of the key recommendations, which I think you'd be interested in. This is about 30 some-odd recommendations here. There's over, I think there's 81 in the report, and so those are of a lesser, more of a housekeeping nature, more of what we sometimes refer to as no-brainers, but still, I think, are of real key interest. And so this first one has to do with a revised classification system, which is important because it does simplify from the system that you came into being in '94. And it's especially helpful, especially in light of the subdivision bylaw that you've just received the draft of this afternoon, because this starts to set the tone for the hierarchy of open spaces and parks within the community. So this is, I think, pretty straightforward, and in the report, there's definitions around what each one of these means. It's important that you ensure that all existing municipal parkland is zoned as park. You've got, in some cases, lands that are simply held in fee simple. You need to codify that a bit better. So you'll see in a couple different ways, we're talking about just getting on with some housekeeping here, and you need to actually dedicate some staff time to it. You need to update the OCP schedule, the scheduling map around parks and trails. So that will synchronize this master plan with your OCP. Under the heading of promoting active lifestyles, we suggest the continued support of Bowen Island Park Group, the Bowen Island Bike Park Group, to construct and maintain the proposed bike park. In fact, is it largely complete now, or?
Not yet.
Not yet? Okay, all right. I knew it was going to be soon to be underway. So that, of course, dovetails nicely with what you're already doing. You need to design and build a multi-use sport court, we think, that can accommodate a range of future uses. So this is everything from tennis to pickleball, to even outdoor babbington and basketball, sometimes even cemetery-level skate park functions, but that needs to happen in sync with the community recreation department. Suggesting that you work with the community to determine an appropriate and desired site for a community garden, in addition to the grappling like community gardens. Upgrade the field at Bix with a new artificial turf field surface. Now, this may come as a surprise to some of you, but keep in mind, this is a 10-year plan. The field's already been there for how many years?
Six.
Six?
Eight.
Eight, okay. And, you know, artificial turf surfaces, you know, generally 10 to 15 years, so important to have in the plan. We're not suggesting it be an immediate issue, but...
And he is showing signs of...
Yeah, already used. There you go.
Yeah.
Investing in park assets.